Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first action of business will be to have the new chairman and the new vice chairman appointed. So motions for chairman.
Keeping with tradition and as we follow, as we have for a long time, I nominate our vice chair, Tiffany Landine, to become chair of the Lincoln County Commission.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. A motion second for Tiffany to be the chairman. Any conversation? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I'll hand the gavel over to you, as you already have it.
Thank you. Next word of business would be to nominate our vice chair.
Again, keeping with tradition, person that follows in my district, I nominate Joel Aaron's to be vice chair.
And I will second that. Gillespie.
Excuse me.
Any discussion? Hearing none, go ahead and call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Can we just do this now?
Yeah, go ahead and we have a short presentation that Commissioner Schmidt is going to address everybody.
David, please stand up. David, you have served your constituents in this county for the past 12 years and you've done it with a great deal of dedication and professionalism. In fact, I think you're one of the most accessible commissioners that your district has ever had. I want you to know that the commission is presenting to you this plaque which said, presented to Dave Gillespie for his dedication, leadership, and service to the citizens of Lincoln County as a commissioner from 2008 to 2020 from the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. And David, I give you this not only as a fellow commissioner, but as a friend. I congratulate you on your outstanding service and let's please stand and give him a one round of applause, please.
Thank you, everyone.
David, this is your plaque and this is your name, sir.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Take care, my friend.
You bet.
And now we should have our...
I'm going to take a seat here.
And we have our newbie up here.
Yeah. Commissioner Gibbon?
David, you know, there is our... David set the precedent here, James, so that he brought cookies when he was retiring. So this is your next week, maybe we can see the same from you, maybe?
Maybe.
So before we go ahead and approve the agenda, we need to add an item to the consent agenda. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, ma'am.
So as item D on the consent agenda, to authorize the chair to execute engagement letter for the 2019 audit. Would that change? Would I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have, I will, I have one question.
Sure.
Before my approval, is I see on here, did you take that off, Sean?
I did not. When you spoke to me about it, the agenda had already been posted.
Okay. Which had to do with the granting of a liquor license. Which item was that?
Uh...
On here.
That is the public hearing at 9:05.
No, there was another one, wasn't there?
There is a alcoholic beverage license renewal for double M LLC on item CI.
Yes. Now, normally, I don't have a problem with, has anybody checked? Because we normally, before we give a renewal of a liquor license, we usually contact with the sheriff to see if there's been any irregularities or anything like that, and if there hasn't, but that's just a check.
Yep, I checked with Steve Swinson and Chad Brown. They said there were no issues out at the site.
I have no other issues, Madam Chair, so I move for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, go ahead, Sean, and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing nobody, anybody from the commission have anything they would like to say?
I would, if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to take this opportunity to wish my mother, on December 31st, reached the shy age of 94 years. I want to take the opportunity at this time to wish her a happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday. Moving on to regular business, we'll do our annual appointments and resolutions. And you should have a copy of those, the past, who held those positions in 2020. And then we'll need to fill some, certainly that Commissioner Gillespie had filled in 2020. So let's just talk about them generally. Commissioner Poppins, you were on the Southeastern Council of Governments on their board. Did you want to continue on that, or is there somebody else that has any interest in that?
I'll yield it to anybody that would like it.
I would like to do that. There are several issues that are confronting Lincoln County that CCOG has. And I would like to serve on that board, if possible, if you have no objections.
I have no objections.
And then I would need an alternate for the executive board.
Glad to serve in that facet.
And then we have the UDC board. There's two spots. Last year, myself and Commissioner Aaron's were on those boards. I would like to continue on that board. Commissioner Aaron's, do you want to continue on that board, or is there anybody else that wants it?
I am happy to allow others the opportunity to serve.
You know what happens if we don't have any volunteers?
You were in the middle, Jim. You just get pointed at, you know?
The rookie gets designated, though.
You know...
Okay.
I think that'd be a good one, because it does have to do with the roads and such.
And you've got a lot of roads.
I think that's a good idea. So, all right. And then we need an alternate as well. Commissioner Gillespie was our alternate last year.
Glad to take alternate position.
Thank you. Emergency management, communication system member, got Commissioner Schmidt in that role. Do you want to continue in that role?
I'll continue. I'll work with Harold on that, since we don't live our part.
And then the emergency management coordinator, Harold. I don't see any reason to change that. Agreement there? Okay. Weed board. Commissioner Gillespie was on the weed board.
I guess that's mine, then.
I think, Jim, that's yours, because...
Um...
Weeds north of...
We haven't got any weeds in Lincoln County, do we?
No.
Southeastern Mental Health Board of Directors. Last year, I was, held that, and Commissioner Schmidt was the alternate. I'm willing to continue with that.
Joel, how about you?
Well, I certainly intend to continue on as Lincoln County Development Association. But happy to serve as the alternate for Mental Health Board.
Okay.
Thank you. And moving on, we have... And Jim, you're going to do the alternate? For that, for Lincoln County Development?
Yes, I'll continue there. I got that guy right, he's right down from my office, Jesse.
Waste Management Board, we have John Hanson.
That will probably go away.
That's going to go away. Do we need anybody in the interim, though, to...
I don't think so.
Close shop? No? What do you, do we need somebody in that position right now? John?
I guess as long as the state's already signed off on it closing, I don't know why we would need to have anybody in that spot.
Okay, then we will not fill that unless...
Oh, we got Bill coming up, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
There's supposed to be an inspection after it closes, and then six months from now, we have to go ahead and file some other paperwork and other things. But I don't, then it'll be officially closed. I don't know that we need a person in that position. I can handle those.
You can, okay. Then we will not fill that one. Let me move on to the airport. We have Commissioner Poppins as the airport liaison board member, and the alternate is Jim Schmidt. Commissioner Poppins, did you want to continue in that role?
I'll serve there, unless someone wants it.
Jim, you should be on that, alternate. You're going to learn about that airport. It's kind of an ongoing situation. I mean, it isn't much, I tell you, but...
Do you want to...
It's a learning experience.
You okay with that?
I'm okay.
And then we have the JDC. Jim, you're going to continue as the alternate?
Yes, and the reason is, JDC is, is in, involved in some reevaluation of incarceration of teens. And I'd like to continue on with that, that process, if you don't, if, and no one would mind.
And I misspoke. That is as the board, as a board member on the JDC juvenile board. And then Commissioner Gillespie was our school and police liaison officer.
I would like, I don't mean to load you up, Jim, but you've been, you've been a teacher and an educator, and I think you share the same kind of concerns about kids that I do. So I'd like to see you serve on that, if you would.
I will.
Thank you. And then we have as an alternate, Commissioner Poppins.
Sure. Unless, again, somebody else wants it.
Inter Lakes Community Action. Jim, we have you on that, and then we had Commissioner Gillespie on that.
No, I'm not, we're not complaining on this, and I'll continue. But I just want you to know, that involves one trip to, one trip to Brookings every month and a lot of other issues that go on. I'll continue. But if anybody else wants the privilege to drive up to Brookings and/or Madison periodically, they can certainly do that.
Chirp, chirp.
Don't hear anybody jumping at that opportunity.
I already wrote your name in.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
I do need an alternate, though.
I gladly take alternates.
And then Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, I have Jim Schmidt, and I have the remaining commissioners as alternates on that. Is everybody good leaving it that way?
Well, I, I think you should, and I think what, what we should do is, we should all take turns to appearing in front of the Sioux Falls Chamber, because we are a member, and Sioux Falls is our largest county, our town in our county. And I think it'd be a good idea for all of you to have the opportunity for that board to meet you. So I think we should all just take turns.
Sounds like we're leaving it the same.
Okay. And I've been to those meetings, and I would agree with you, that I think everybody should go to one or two of those meetings. Planning and zoning board, I'm on that.
I wouldn't mind taking it if you want to relieve some of your duties.
I will let you do that. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
And then as an alternate, I have Commissioner Aaron's as an alternate, and I wouldn't mind being the alternate, but if Commissioner Aaron's wants to do that.
Doesn't matter to me. Happy to serve.
I'll go ahead and take the alternate, since I've been the one going to those meetings. All right, so then that's a resolution. As we've discussed, we need a motion to pass all of those appointments to approve that resolution.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Moving on, we need to talk, we need to approve a resolution for our legal newspapers. They are staying the same as last year, but we are adding Argus Leader. Or I would like a motion to add Argus Leader with the other four that we currently have, which is the Sioux Valley News, the Lennox Independent, the T Weekly, and the Beersford Republic.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. The next item is a resolution for the official depositories of the county. There have been a couple that are recommended to be added. One is First Bank and Trust Wealth Management Services and US Bank, which we're not on as depositories in 2020. I'd entertain a motion to approve the...
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we need to decide our chattel mortgage sale location. It's normally, it's been in the front of the courthouse in Canton. I don't see any reason to change that, so I would like a motion to approve a resolution naming that as our chattel mortgage sale location.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. I, Sean, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then the last resolution that we have before us is a resolution, be it resolved, that SDCL 7-7-25 states that the Board of County Commissioners, by resolution, may authorize county officials to attend educational conferences, meetings, and conventions held and conducted within a 500-mile radius of the Lincoln County Courthouse, 104 North Main, Canton, South Dakota, for up to three days pertaining to the betterment and advancement of county government. Therefore, be it resolved that the county highway superintendent, auditor, treasurer, register of deeds, state's attorney, sheriff, county assessing officer, planning and zoning director, IT director, 911 coordinator, building superintendent, and their respective staff be authorized to attend conferences, meetings, and conventions for the purpose set forth in SDCL 7-7-25, and that the mileage and necessary expenses to attend such be allowed. This resolution will be for the fiscal year of 2021.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We've got a few minutes before our first public hearing. Next item, number four, Steve, tee around. Nope. Bill, do you want to tee yours up?
The first one is for the courthouse improvement advisory committee, and that's more just teeing up for the commission. You have, I think, five applicants at this point, and how you want to select them or how you want to assemble that commission or committee.
Thoughts?
I've read through each of the letters of interest. They all seem to be... Just so the public knows who we're talking about here, we've had, we've had five people apply for what was originally four positions for the courthouse improvement committee. Those, the names of those people are Dave Van, and I'm going to butcher his name here, but I believe it's Van Newenhezen. He contacted myself, and I submitted his name to the auditor's office. Betty, and he is from Sioux Falls. All of these people are Lincoln County residents, by the way. Betty Otten from T. Larry Nelson from here in Canton. Paul Paulson, who resides in Sioux Falls. And I believe that is all five. And so, looks like we have five good applicants who applied. All, I think I know most of these people, trying to, I think I believe, I've met Mr. Paulson before, but I've met everybody else. And then I believe also, the last person on there should be Chad Skiles. And so I know Chad as well. So those are our five applicants. Even though there were only four positions, there was only five people who applied. So I think in the interest of, you know, getting as much input from the public as possible and showing that this commission is truly interested in what people who are interested in the courthouse improvement are thinking, my proposal would be, we just put all five on the committee. Looks like there's a good diversity of where they live. I think Larry Nelson is from down here, Chad Skiles is from Canton, Paul Paulson, and Mr. Newenhezen are from Sioux Falls. And then it looks like we've got another individual in there as well, Betty, who, Betty Otten from T. So we've also got some geographic diversity that looks like it'll represent all the districts adequately as well. So I guess I'll make a motion to appoint all five of those people to the courthouse improvement committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Gibbon?
Any discussion? Commissioner Aaron's, who else is on that advisory committee as, for other officials?
A representative from the sheriff's office, representative from the state's attorney's office, Commissioner Schmidt, and myself, and a representative from UJS that we've invited, preferably a judge. However, we're going to allow them to, you know, if a judge can't make it, they can send administrator, whoever, in their presence. The, the UJS personnel will be ex-officio members. I guess their policy is they prefer not to have a voting role, and that's fine. That would be in standing with the precedent set up in Cottington County when they set up their courthouse improvement committee as well. So those are all the members.
Thank you. So I do have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Public defender proposals?
As far as the courthouse committee, the second issue would be is, when do you want to start holding meetings? Would you like me to notify all the individuals and begin setting up for the first meeting for that group? And do you have a timeframe?
Yeah, so, good question, Bill. Commissioner Schmidt and I did discuss this, I think, briefly after the last commission meeting. I think what we had discussed was, just pragmatically speaking, it would probably take a couple weeks to gather everyone up and to get the information out to them from today's date. So what I'm thinking is, we would meet, and again, I'll throw this open for discussion, Commissioner Schmidt, if you want to jump in. But what I'm thinking is, at the end of this month, would be our first meeting. Because the other thing that we need to get into place is, we not only have to shepherd all of the individual members into their respective positions now, we also have to make sure that the professionals who we're relying upon, from Architecture, Inc., from the engineering companies, and some of those people are also prepared to attend, and then they can actually be in attendance. And, you know, just so the public kind of knows what I'm thinking here, kind of goes beyond your question, is, I foresee the committee members touring both this courthouse, behind the, behind the scenes, if you will. I don't think there's too many behind the scenes places in this courthouse to go, but we'll, we'll take you into the judges' chambers and we'll take a trip up to the top of the attic, so everybody can see what, what condition the courthouse actually is. We'll go in the basement. There's nothing off limits to this committee. And then we'll probably, and we'll do this in coordination with UJS, as well as the Minnehaha County Commission. But I think it would be very helpful for the committee members to see what the Minnehaha County court system looks like. And specifically, judges' chambers, judges' courtrooms. And again, that'll be in coordination. We'll ask for, you know, permission from the presiding judge up there. But those are all places that we're going to want these members to see and take a look at, so that they can have something in their mind's eye that they can factor into when they're considering making planning considerations and providing input on any kind of courthouse improvements. And then if we have to do any field trips beyond Sioux Falls or Lincoln County jurisdictions, we can certainly look at that as well. But we'll also, once we get the entire committee formed, each of the members of the committee can provide more input on what that actual committee operations are going to look like. But I'm just kind of giving a broad outlook of kind of what the first few steps are going to look like in this process, so the public knows what's going on.
I believe you had Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Rambo, on the committee as well, when you said that.
Of course.
Were those meetings going to be public? I thought that, initially, I think that was the discussion.
I think those meetings, Madam Chairwoman, are going to be held right here in these commission chambers, unless we got to do a field trip. And they will be held with the video system on, and people can participate because of COVID, or if they're disabled, or they can't attend, they can zoom in or call in during public opportunity comment.
So is it your intent that they be published?
Do you want them to be live?
Yeah, they'll be live and they'll have to be published meetings.
Okay, just for clarification. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments, in addition to what Commissioner Aaron's has outlined, which is a pretty exhaustive thing. But I want to emphasize the fact that this is a very, very detailed situation, because of our situation, looking at the facilities that we currently have, looking at our current courthouse, looking at the options that are in front of us. And the reason for putting, you know, starting it as it has, I think that gives the court system enough time to really come forward with what their future needs may be, so we can factor into our discussion, our evaluation, our search, just what we're going to have to deal with. So I think this is going to be an exhaustive situation, but I like the idea that we have a great diversity from the public, and it's going to be interesting what we find.
And so, for scheduling purposes, do you have a time that you want the meetings? Do you want them during the day, in the evenings? Do you have a preference for when we start contacting people and trying to come up with the date and time?
Well, I, I think initially, at least for the first meeting, we're going to need to meet at night, be respectful of people's professions and occupations. And we'll meet at night. We'll get a sense from the committee where they want to go after that. But I could foresee the first meeting... But I could foresee the first meeting taking place at, for example, say, seven o'clock on a, on a, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday night, what, what have you. And doing that before the end of this month.
All right, thank you. I think I have enough direction to contact people and to at least get the first meeting scheduled. And then, the second issue is the public defenders' proposals. There were several of them that came in, and wanted to know how the commission wanted to handle that. Did you want to review them and then discuss them? Because they're contracts, and I think the proposals are somewhat different from some of them, from what the RFP was. There was a limited amount of responses. And so I think those, one of those things, that you can interview people if you like, you can designate somebody to interview them, you can make a decision if you want to enter into negotiations with some of them, to see if they would be willing to take on some of those services. So those are all the options that you have. Contract negotiations are also something that we can discuss in executive session, if you wish. But initially, since this is RFP and it's out to the public, how would you like to proceed at this point?
You know, my thoughts, Bill, are, going back to the conversation you and I had previously, I anticipated we would get some proposals that were somewhat different from the RP. It appears, without naming any names, or getting into any of the specifics, but just so the public knows what we're dealing with here, it appears that some of the firms that applied wanted to just do, they have a certain profile as a law firm, certain cases that they handle. I know many of the people who have applied here. It didn't surprise me, I'll just say that, that some of them wanted to handle the abuse and neglect cases, or conflict cases, and some just wanted to handle overflow criminal defense cases. So it didn't surprise me. My view all along had been that we should split it in two. Aside from that, I do think that, number one, we should consider all comers, but number two, I think we should consider these, even though they may have, one firm may have said, I just want to do criminal cases, and the other firm said, I want to do A&amp;N cases. That may actually be a blessing in disguise. We may just not know it yet. I mean, for example, a solo practitioner firm may not be in the best position to be able to handle the entire contract, especially when I kind of look at the universe or the profile of cases here. If I had my druthers, I'd probably split this into two anyway. On one side would be the criminal defense cases, and on the other side would be the A&amp;N and conflict cases and things like that. That's my personal preference. That's where I'm coming from. I was kind of underwhelmed by the number of applicants. And, you know, I guess we could let it out again, and maybe do another push with the Second Circuit Bar Association, and with the presiding judge, and, and the bar newsletter. I don't, I don't know if it, was it even advertised in the bar newsletter at all or not?
It was given to the court administrator of Minnehaha County, and he has the Second Circuit email list. And so, he had sent it out for us, so it was supposed to go to every attorney in the Second Circuit.
Sure.
And then it was also noticed, as the other things are in the papers of record, and also on our website, word of mouth, so.
Sure.
I am not surprised at who applied, nor the numbers.
Were these?
Kind of our universe.
These were set out as three separate RFPs, were they not?
Yes, they can be up to three, yes.
Okay.
That's what we had discussed.
We've already divided it out.
Yes.
Okay.
Bill, is there, I, I'm certainly not an expert on any of that, so I would, whoever does the evaluation certainly should have, we got two commissioners here that are attorneys, so they would have understanding of that. But just as a response to reading through the individuals that had applied, I was quite underwhelmed, quite honestly, with some of the applicants. Is there a reason why we had so few, or that, the caliber of individuals that applied? I shouldn't say that, because I really don't know all their professional background. But was there some reason why? Is it the salary? Is it the job perspective? What, what is it? Because?
I think for different individuals, different reasons, but this is just the facts of Lincoln County, which is, geographically, Canton is far enough away from Sioux Falls, that if you have court in Sioux Falls, and you have to come to Canton, that travel time, sometimes it's difficult on people's schedules. So, if you have, if you have a lot of business in the Minnehaha County courthouse, which a lot of the attorneys, if you do abuse and neglect cases, they're really a specialty. I mean, they're not something that all attorneys deal with. They typically take one to two years. You have to have, go through a special course for representing kids before you can work as children's attorneys. So, they're a little more specialized in that area. A lot of the attorneys work in Minnehaha County, and there are contracts up there for them. So then what you wind up with is, can you make your calendar work? That if you, I'll go back to my experience. When I had the contract down here, eventually, I worked in Canton. It's what I did, because to take anything else anywhere else, it becomes very difficult. Because we have court now anymore from, well, we have court five days a week down here. Abuse and neglect cases or juvenile cases are usually Tuesdays and Wednesdays. If those A&amp;N cases, I believe, are the same days up in Minnehaha County, you have to make a choice where you're gonna work. And there's more work up north than there is down here. And so that's part of the problem. If we break it up, we might get a few more, you know, individuals that will apply, because if you do all of them, and you wind up going to court on Monday through Thursday, and you're in Canton, then we've captured that person. This is where they're gonna work. And I think that's what limits some of the numbers, is, it has to fit into people's calendars and schedules to come down here. And so there is a competition for those attorneys. When we tried to hire in the state's attorney's office, I think one time we got three candidates, the next time we had, I think, two. So it just is not easy to find attorneys and, to work. But part of it is just scheduling and location. Minnehaha County's busy, we're busy. You gotta pick where you want to work at. So we could try to break it up. We could try to negotiate with the people who've applied, and see what terms we can come to, since it's a personal service contract. I just need no direction. They've contacted me, and I'd like to get back to them and just let them know what our process is from here on out.
My personal preference is, I'd be comfortable letting this contract out, both on the criminal defense side and on the A&amp;N side, to several of these applicants. Just at first blush. And so, if we did take the, the approach of maybe piecemealing it out a little more than what was first anticipated, I would have no problem with that.
What if, just a suggestion, what if myself, and perhaps Commissioner Aaronz, since we're attorneys, and we do know these individuals that have applied, sit down with you and go through these applications, and figure out what the problems or the advantages are for the county, and then we can discuss that in executive session with the full board, and figure out where we go from there?
Okay. Sounds like a great idea. Are the two attorneys willing to do that?
Well, I certainly am.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you. Bill, I'm gonna have you take a seat for a second, because we had a, we have a public hearing that's scheduled for 9:05. And Sean, that is for an application of sale of alcoholic beverages from the Good Earth Farm LLC, located at the property, legally described as Kroger's addition, tract 2C, Northwest Quarter, 289851. Is there anyone here that would, will open the public hearing? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak to the commission about the application?
Yes, we have the owner here.
Awesome. If you want to come up, take the mic, and just state your name and address, and please speak into the microphone.
Nancy Kirstine. I live at 28318-466 Avenue in Lenox. I'm the owner of the Good Earth Farm. I'm applying for a beer and wine license to hold events at our farm, private and potentially public events. It's also my residence, so I would like a little more control over what happens there. And I see this as a way of doing that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Nancy, this is going to be an all-event center, I mean, for like birthdays, weddings? What do you envision for a year?
It's, it's a, we just renovated our barn, and we do have quite a bit of space out there. We just acquired more property. The barn is kind of the center, focus of that. I do anticipate renting it out. Primarily, I see it as a wedding venue. There has been some interest in just, you know, maybe live music and a farm-to-table dinner, because we are a vegetable farmer also. That's our primary focus. We grow vegetables.
Yes.
But I gotta put a lot of pieces of the puzzle together to make it work. So this, as I see, is a path forward to doing that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone? Oh. Mr. Gillespie, come on up.
I was gonna say that. I can't let go, so.
That's okay.
Sorry, everybody. I, in talking to Commissioner Gibbon, I've heard nothing but good about your upcoming business, and my address, 1125 East Elder, Canton, so I wish you all the luck, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak against the application for the license? All right, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the...
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead.
I would just like to add one thing.
Sure.
If I could. That is in my district. A, it is on Lincoln County 105, which is referred to as Highway 17. And I did visit with Nancy this past week, the applicant. I've also visited with several of her neighbors in the vicinity as well. And the response from all of them has been almost all unanimously positive.
Oh, good.
And I think there was maybe a little hesitation on one of the persons that I've visited with in regard to maybe additional traffic on the road, or some families, of course, that have children that will be driving soon. But other than that, of the 12 or 14 people that I did visit with, the great majority was positive, so with that, I would like to entertain a motion to, to approve this permit.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Gibbon, and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any further discussion?
She raises good vegetables, too.
If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I haven't got some time. Bill, since we'd started with you, you want to come on up and finish?
Okay, I think I have directions on the public defenders' contract, and then the other issue is, from the chairman of the mental health board, they had sent a proposal from the qualified mental health providers, and they were asking for an increase from $90 an hour to 110, to match what Minnehaha County had increased for two providers, which is Jennifer Anderson and Phil Loving. And they had sent a letter on December 14th of 2020. So that's where you'll find their explanation. They've been working at that 90-hour pay rate for the last 10 years, and so they are asking for a match with Minnehaha County, which had raised it up to 110 per hour.
Heard the request. Is there a motion?
I, I'm not for necessarily spending money, but if you have to deal with the mental health issues that they deal with, you'll find that $110 is, is, is fair compensation. Because some of these are really difficult situations that they have to try to raise a resolution on. So I'll move for that to match what Minnehaha County has given.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion. I'll probably support it, too. One question I have is, probably doesn't really go to the merits of the request, but just by way of background, so they're paid an hourly stipend when they're doing work for a Lincoln County. Is this for people who cannot afford the services, and so there's no insurance reimbursement here?
No, what they're doing is, for the involuntary mental health commitments, under the statute, we have to have them evaluated by a qualified mental health evaluator every single day. They can be held up to five days before there has to be a hearing. So during those five days, these are the individuals who go in and meet with them for short periods of time. They're probably in with them for anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes, to assess their condition, whether or not they can be released safely. If they can be released safely, then they make that recommendation, and they can, otherwise, there is a mental health hearing, and they have a right to challenge and request to be released from custody, or being held. And the qualified mental health experts are the ones who come in and testify as to their treatment, their condition, and whether or not they're a danger to themselves or to the public.
I'm going to assume, then, that those services are not traditionally covered under healthcare insurance, then?
No, those aren't, because those are procedural. That's what we have to do in order to involuntarily hold someone.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Bill, what age group approximately are we talking about that would get these services?
Typically, they're 18 and up, because parents can go ahead and commit their children for mental health care. If they're under 18, they're already minors, and then parents have custody of them. Otherwise, it's 18 to unlimited. It would, it's just an individual who a family member or mental health care or law enforcement has determined that they could be a danger to themselves, or to someone else. And they can come into custody through the medical provider, or law enforcement, or a family member. And so there's multiple avenues they can wind up at a very behavioral. But the age range is usually 18 and up. We have had rare occasions where they've been under 18, and they've been emancipated, but that's extremely rare.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Sean, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I know you're requesting an executive session. I wonder if that would be best moved till later, since we have so many folks in the audience?
I am here to the end of the meeting, so I will do it at your pleasure.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna have you take a seat for now, and we'll circle back to Sheriff Swenson.
Okay. Just asking for a motion for the chair to sign the agreements, the contract agreements with the city of Canton, the city of Worthing, for police dispatch services for 2021.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner...
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And for the chair to sign the Union County 2021 jail contract. $65 a day per person, per, per person per day.
Very well. Heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sean, are you just waiting around for your item seven? Or are you going to stay for the other items? Julia's got a bunch of items, and then I've got you, and then we're opening some sealed bids. Well, if you, if yours is real short, why don't we take you and?
Mine is very short. So I was approached last week about, and I'll pull up their name. I don't know it off the top of my head, but, a member from MJ Electric, who is a contractor for Excel Energy, approached me because they're replacing power poles throughout the whole eastern side of South Dakota. They have currently a location up, I think, by Del Rapids, maybe, or Baltic, where they're storing poles, and they wanted someplace south of Sioux Falls. So they were wondering if they could possibly utilize a spot, maybe at the 4H grounds in Lenox. I also suggest the possibility of land by the T Airport and the transfer station. He was not familiar with those two spots. But if you guys were interested in them utilizing one of those areas, they would then approach you and negotiate rental cost. It sounded like there would never be a ton of poles there at one time, maybe like three truckloads, and they would just bring them in as they need them. So I don't think it would be a big eyesore. My concern with the 4H grounds right up front was that if we did start doing some construction of egg buildings out there this year, which I would like to at least think we'd have one in motion, if not multiple buildings, that it might get in the way. But if we stick to the north side of the building, I think it'd be okay. And that's kind of what they were looking for, I think, is just that north area.
John, you and I talked about that, and that does have access. It has its own access on the north side of the fairground. The other part is, I'd like to see the rent that they would go, go towards the 4H and development of their, of their buildings and their arena, what they have in mind. So this could be kind of a, monies that would take in, could go be devoted to them, and it would go to a good cause. I like that, at that particular site. And it is off, right off the oil road of 105. So anyway, that would be my preference.
Thoughts, anybody?
John, how about, approximately how long are they thinking that they'd be storing them there?
It would be during this year time. So I would imagine it would have to happen prior to frost going in the ground in the fall. So I suppose it could start in the next month or two and go all the way into next fall. He said it was a 2021 project, so I didn't expect it to go beyond this fiscal year. But I honestly, I didn't talk to him at any detail.
I mean, personally, I think wherever it's the safest and the most convenient and not going to rip up a yard, say at the 4H ground or what have you, that makes the most sense. You're a building and ground superintendent. I think you can maybe make a recommendation to them where you think it should be. And I don't know why we wouldn't listen to you.
Well, I, I, I think the transfer station area is very attractive to me, too. Although, I guess, I'd really do have to have input on where we're going with that. If we're going to try to put that up for sale, are we going to sit on it for a while? Or that, you know, that might be more attractive to them. They like the idea of having it fenced in, for whatever reason. But of course, the transfer station is fenced in. I think if it's a closer proximity to the interstate, it might be easier for them. But I think my only concern with the 4H grounds, really outside of the construction, is it is a busy road, and you're talking about pulling in, you know, a semi-truck of poles. But that said, if they come in from the north side, they should be able to get off the highway fairly easy. And he looked at that already, so I think he's under agreement that he could make that happen, so.
Okay.
The only question I have, John, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Is, did they create a contract with any local private ownership at all versus, before they went to the county?
I, I think he was driving around and just kind of looking the countryside over. So I don't know if he approached any private owners or not.
Okay.
John, you bring up a good point, which may not be related right now, but is for the future of the transfer station. In my opinion, we haven't, we haven't made any, many ideas yet. You know, we haven't, I mean, we closed it out of, because of budgetary reasons. But as far as what we intend to do with it, none of that has been discussed. We haven't put any groups together to find out what the public may want. Maybe they got some ideas. I don't know. I don't foresee us moving on that for a year or two. I don't see any imminent reason why we need to expedite that whole process. So I agree with Commissioner Landine. If you, in your judgment, if you think the transfer station is a better place, that's fine. I just want the rent to go to 4H kids, that's all.
Well, I'll work with them, then, and have them present something to you under normal contractual negotiations, however that works. All right?
Thank you.
The T Airport facility is still in consideration or not?
He was not familiar with it. He felt that that might be a little too close to Sioux Falls for him, but I don't think he really understood there, it's not a very far away from the 4H grounds either. You know, I think, but it was not attractive to him right up front, as per our conversation.
Julia.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item is to promote Becky Vanderbrook from Rutgers Clerk to Deputy Register of Deeds in the Register of Deeds Office at 2139 per hour, effective the 28th of December.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next, the Register of Deeds, Becky Matheson, would like to request an exception to the eligibility of holiday pay for a former employee. So per policy right now, to receive holiday pay, an employee needs to work the day before the holiday and the day after. Jess Wicker, as you know, resigned. She gave a two-week notice. However, the two-week notice ended on Christmas Day, leaving her, per policy, ineligible for that benefit. So would you like to, I guess I'm asking how you want to move forward. An exception to policy would be to pay for those two days of holidays, so Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, or stick to policy?
Thoughts from the board?
Do we have any reference where we've changed or abandoned the policy and did something similar?
No, often this doesn't happen, honestly. It's just kind of a, honestly, it's a fluke when she gave her notice. She tried to give two-week notice, and that two-week notice was the end of, or it was Christmas Day. We had conversation about extending her resignation time and things of that nature, but she started her new position the following Monday, so unfortunately, it wasn't optioned.
I guess my thought is to stick with the policy. Anybody else?
Well, I don't want to be a Grinch. It's Christmas, you know.
You never want to be a Grinch.
I don't know. Was she aware of this situation? I mean, that she wouldn't be eligible for, I mean, we're talking two days here. We're not talking huge amounts of expenditures. But was she aware that by doing this, that she was creating herself ineligible for what this does her? Didn't make any difference to her, Julia. I don't know.
I did have a conversation with her, I mean, letting her know that this was policy. The policy has been in place for a good couple of years.
So she was aware of this?
Well, I can't speak to if she specifically knew, but upon her resignation, she was aware.
Okay.
Well, once you start making exceptions, then you're pretty much tied to it.
Yeah. You know, because rules are rules, and once you wiggle with them, yeah, you'll live with all the exceptions that could come your way.
Would entertain a motion? One way or the other.
Everybody's mute. I'll move to stay with our policy and stick with our current policies, so she is ineligible. Although I do have great feelings that, you know, she may, if she was aware, I don't want to short, because she was an excellent employee, did an excellent job.
Sure.
And I have mixed feelings on that. But I agree with Commissioner Gibbon's that, once you make an exception, you live with it. So we're not making an exception.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Well, speaking of exceptions, Sheriff Swenson is asking for an exception for Tam Ratcliffe to carry over six hours of vacation time. As you know, per policy, the carryover is 80 hours. She's over her 80 hours. He'd like to let her do the 86.
What is her position, and what does she do?
She's a nine-month dispatcher.
Was this, I know we did some vacation payouts. Why, why didn't she take the money when she could, or?
The payout was for.
Those were for deputies?
Yeah.
And just so you know, they're pretty shorthanded with COVID as well. She had somewhere in several hundred hours of overtime, so it was just hard for them to burn it off. She actually took a vacation day and then had a family emergency or something, and that vacation day turned into an bereavement day. So she, so she, it just was a flip. So I hate to penalize her for all the hard work she's done this year. And it's just, it was just tough for them to get any time off. And it's a very minimum amount of hours, the six hours.
Well, it is, and we had made some concessions for some of the deputy sheriffs because of that same thing. I don't know. What are the thoughts of the board?
You have conflict of decisions now.
I don't, I don't have, I think you, every situation is different. Every situation, you know, has its unique characteristics. If a person takes a vacation day and it ends up to a bereavement day, that tells me there was some emotion and heartache involved in that. And I have no problem with extending those six hours. I would move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next, let's talk FICRA leave. So the current administration has chose not to extend Families First Corona Response Act, but rather give the discretion to employ, to employers. So what that means is the COVID leave, the two different types of COVID leave that were, that the commission approved back in March, they're giving the discretion right now to extend it into the new year or stop it. We're a public employer, so we won't get a tax benefit for extending it. However, there's talk, or I'm reading some different articles, about the new administration possibly extending it. So we're kind of in a limbo state the next couple of weeks. Some options for your consideration is, one, end FICRA and the COVID leave, and employees use their vacation and sick time, per policy, is right now. The second option would be to reevaluate and extend the COVID leave and then, again, reevaluate at the end of January, after new administration takes place.
When an employee takes COVID leave under Families First, is that eligible for reimbursement from the state through our county allotted COVID funds?
It's mine, okay, yeah, you speak to them.
It was eligible for the CARES Act, but the CARES Act ended on December 31st. So unless that's extended, which we haven't heard, then that option is over.
So the pot of money that we have from the state right now, that has been extended, correct?
It has not.
Yeah, that has not been extended.
The CARES Act, no, it hasn't been extended.
Okay. Has it been extended for the state, or did I see that incorrectly? Where they were? Yeah, they were given an extension of time to use that money?
I don't know.
I don't know. I know that the CARES Act, what we submit our money into, or submit our complaints, or submit the expenses into, that has not been extended.
Okay.
And that's where we would have submitted in for the reimbursement, for the extended leave time.
Understood.
I have a question to our state legislature. Have they extended that at all? They have? Okay, okay. Do we have to make this decision correctly now? Or can we wait until after the state has made that determination?
We do need to know now, because it determines how people code it in the system. And if, you know, if people are gone for COVID-related reason, how to pay them and what leave benefit they're going to use. So if you are maybe on the fence, one approach may be, let's just extend it to the end of January and then reevaluate based on all the factors kind of up in the air right now.
Yeah, I'm looking at the South Dakota Department of Labor Regulation, press release, December 28th. HR 133 was signed by President Trump, signed into law. Right now, the state of South Dakota is saying that it's waiting on the U.S. Department of Labor to provide guidance on how to implement the CARES Act extensions in South Dakota. They're also saying benefit payments cannot begin under these new and extended programs until that guidance has been received. That would tell me that we also need to wait.
I think that's a good alternative.
It also tells me that an extension's been granted as well. So.
I think we're kind of getting, this is good conversation, but I think right now what I'm asking about, I think the CARE, I know that the CARES Act is one thing, and FICRA leave is another.
Yeah, and what I asked is, can FICRA leave? When someone takes FICRA leave here, was that previously, when the CARES Act, when we were still allowed to apply for CARES Act money? Could we get that reimbursed, CARES Act money for FICRA? So.
Yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, then yes, we've got to wait for some guidance here. But we know that there's an extension that's been granted under federal law. We're just waiting for the guidance. Why can't we wait for the guidance here? Like, we need to make a decision today, or else we're what? What's going to happen if we don't make the decision today?
We don't know how to code the time for employees. And so right now, how it works is if someone's off for COVID, they have 80 hours to use for the COVID leave. So just in fairness to employees and administrative standpoint, we don't know how to code the leave if somebody is taking time off for COVID. leave if somebody is taking time off for COVID.
So, that, it's a coding issue. They're still going to get the leave. The county's going to pay it out because the CARES Act is not paying for it right now. However you code it is how you're going to code it, but, which I'm fine with. I mean, I think you could figure that out within your department, how you're going to code it. The issue I have is regardless of what that leave looks like, how's it going to get reimbursed? And if we've got a CARES Act extension here, maybe we create a new code with a contingency on it. I'm just thinking out loud here. It says, look, you're getting your, you're getting your leave and it may get reimbursed by the federal government, it may not, but regardless, the employee gets the time off and gets paid, right? Whether it's by the county or by the federal, by the state?
Um, maybe. It depends if the individual has time.
Okay.
So, let's play hypotheticals. So, an individual, let's say we don't make a decision today. An individual has, um, needs to be out for two weeks or whatever the case may be for a COVID-related reason. They don't have any vacation time or sick time. Now, what do we do?
Well, can we approach it on a case-by-case basis until we get the guidance, until the state receives the guidance?
That would be up to you guys.
I guess I'd be in favor of extending it to the end of January until we maybe have a little bit more clarity about what's going forward. And we're running the risk of not getting reimbursement for those leave weeks.
I'm okay with that.
In January, correct?
Yeah.
Keeps us moving forward. You need a motion on that?
I do need a motion.
I would so move that we run this till the end of January.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
What is the question again? Or what was the motion again, please?
To extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for the county, for county employees, until we get some more clarity.
For the purpose of coding, so they know how to record their time.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner? Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, it's more than a coding issue. Really what it is, is it's a risk versus reimbursement issue.
Correct.
That's part of it, yes.
You know, the dollars and cents part of this is, the consequence of this motion is if it passes and somebody needs to go on COVID leave and doesn't have, uh, time off, we're going to pay for it anyway.
Correct.
That's the consequence of the motion.
Yes, that is a consequence. Hopefully, the state will come up with the answer to our questions soon, sooner than later.
Sean, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Okay, um.
I'm a yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two more yeses here.
Two more, Schmidt and.
How did you vote, sir?
He's waiting for your vote, Michael.
Voted yes, sorry.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Um, and lastly, pursuant to state statute, we need to set the wages for the commission. I have market data for you. I've provided that to you. If you'd like to, if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer those questions. How would you like to move forward?
What is, what, what was your findings with the market value?
So, here's the information here. This is a lot of numbers, so I'm going to just break it down here. So, here is the market data. So, the commission is roughly over market by this 18%. Now, before anybody falls off their chair here, the reason why it's so significantly high is that Carver County, Minnesota, is here and they're full-time, commissioners. So, if you take the outlier out, then it puts them back here. And here is where market's at then, without Carver County, because it's significantly di- different. So, if you go up here, here's where the commission is at right now. How would you like to move forward?
I think when we passed our budget, we, we put in there that we, the commission would take no new raises and would freeze their salary at the present position. Wasn't that the, wasn't that, wasn't that our, our position?
It was.
And I would make that motion that we should do that.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Sean, go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Sean, do you need to read that resolution?
I can do so. And, um, this is, this should be in front of you as well. I, I believe so. Whereas, the Lincoln County Commission is committed to attracting citizens of highest quality to public service by establishing salaries for elected officials based upon the respective duties of each office as well as the fiscal concerns of the county. Now, therefore be it resolved that effective December 20th, 2020, the first day of the 2021 payroll year, as approved for the budget for fiscal year 2021, the salary for each member of the Board of Lincoln County Commissioners shall be set as follows: $23,732.80 annual salary.
Do you want a separate motion on the resolution, Sean?
If the first and second is clear with that resolution.
I concur.
And who had seconded that? Schmidt?
I did. I concur on my second.
I made the motion. Uh, Joel's second.
Okay. So, we're good, or do you want to call the roll again?
Uh, we're good if that, if first and second agree with that resolution.
I do.
All right, very well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, did we, did we have a sheriff's office hire that we needed to talk about?
All right.
Oh, sure, let's talk about them. Thank you very much.
I thought I missed it.
Nope, that was me. Um, that is to hire Greg DeGrange as a full-time deputy sheriff for the sheriff's office at 2488 per hour, effective Monday, the 11th of January.
All right, further requests? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, and, uh, question. Is Mr. DeGrange, or now to be Deputy DeGrange, is he coming in under, how do I want to say this? Is this the new FTE positions that have been created? Or is he filling in existing?
This one is a filling in existing.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Sean, call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then we had a request for executive session under SDCL 125-2 sub 3.
And sub 4.
And sub 4 with Mr. Golden. Could entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Hold on. John, you want to go in?
I can go in anytime.
Okay. You want to go in now?
Sure.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
They're taking pictures now. Everybody's on.
Commissioner Ehrens, is he here? I'll just get in there, please.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then I need an motion to go into executive session. Oh.
My only hope is corn.
Can we have Commissioner Ehrens?
No, you can just go.
1361, yeah.
Then you have to have a picture.
491 for March?
Yeah.
You'll take your picture and then go into it.
We're out of executive session right now.
Anyway, you know, it got to be, uh, it got to be 10 bucks, you know? And I'm thinking, $10, geez, that's pretty good.
Dave, Dave, corn's 491.
How much you got to sell?
I said, corn futures is 491 right now. $4.91 a cent. No.
Gentlemen?
Oh, that's it.
I'm sorry.
While we're still in our meeting, I want to make another motion to go into executive session under SDCL 125-2 sub 1. If we could, please, we've got a couple of employee evaluations to conduct.
Okay. I will, I'll move for we go into executive session under whatever you said to do those last employee evaluations.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Executive session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We still have sealed bids at 1015 for surplus tax deed property, tract 16 in DNL Industrial Edition in the southwest quarter, section 24 Township 100, range 51 west of the Fifth Prime Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, parcel number 100.50.64.K016.
So, we advertised to receive sealed bids, uh, the weeks of December 7th and 14th, and the deadline for receiving bids was the 30th at 5:00 PM, and we received zero bids. However, yesterday, I received a phone call that someone was interested in that property. I encouraged that individual to reach out to their commissioner since I was, Bill and I were going to be asking the board what we should do now with this property since we didn't receive any bids. Um, he's not in here, is he? No, he's still in there. Okay. I think we can now sell it privately as long as we sell it for 90% of what it's appraised for at minimum. But I would want Bill's clarification on that, and I don't believe that we have to act on anything right now if you would like to wait.
I think that you should seek, um, some clarification from the state's attorney's office. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
I think that's probably how we need to proceed, is since we didn't get anything, we don't need to take any action today.
Okay, excellent. Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could also request to amend the travel resolution that was done previously under item 1, to also include the Human Resources Director, Geographical Information Services Director, Veterans Surface, Veterans Services Officer, as well as the 4H Advisor.
Those were just left out of?
Uh, yes, I pulled this resolution from previous years and evidently they had not been in there. Um, and it was brought to my attention during an executive session that they likely should be. And I think it was, um, a past era that's been brought forward, so.
I'll move to include those persons listed by Sean.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. I think we've covered everything on the agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.